Welcome. I'm calling aboard at this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Thursday, October 13th, 2022. I am Select Board Chair Leonard Higgins, and I will now confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes.
John Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Eric Helmut?
Yes.
Seth, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Sandy Poyet?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
Ashley Meyer?
Yes.
Great. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, signed in law on July 17, 2022, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation until March 31st, 2023. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom. It is being recorded, and it's also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating via Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow posted agenda materials also found on the town's website using the Novus Agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. So let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. And we next turn to the second item on the agenda, that's the introduction. I'll just wait a little bit while I siren goodbye. That's the introduction of Anna Litten, our library director, and I'll turn it over to our town manager, Ms. Poyet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to introduce Anna Litten, who is our new library director. She comes to that position from being the assistant library director. And I know from having worked with her before in that position that she brings a lot of energy and excitement here to Arlington. And instead of my talking about her, I would like to introduce her and have her introduce herself.
Please.
Is this the right height? Is this good? Okay, thank you. Good evening to everyone. I want to thank Sandy and the members of the Select Board for inviting me to speak to you tonight. Sandy asked me here tonight to introduce myself, and when I'm introducing myself, I often tell people, I became a librarian for all the wrong reasons, because I love books. But I've stayed in the field for over 25 years for all the right reasons, which is that I am truly dedicated to the mission of public libraries, to serve communities with engaging collections, useful and usable spaces, and community-enriching services. Over my career, I've served many roles: reference librarian, a teaching librarian, a teen services librarian, a technology instructor, a community relations coordinator. I came to Arlington in 2017 as the Fox Branch Librarian. The joy of working in branch libraries is providing direct service, ordering books that you watch patrons pick up every single day, offering programs where families bring their young kids to engage with the library, creating comfortable neighborhood spots for every single resident to come in, find a seat, do their work, find a book, find something that's truly engaging. Engaging directly with the community every day is the joy of working in libraries. In 2018, when our former assistant director left, I knew that I could support the community, the staff, and the director. There was so much to love in my previous role as assistant director, namely creating the Arlington Reads Together program every year, pulling in new partners to that program, including Arlington Public Schools, the Dallin Museum, and others, building connections across town with town boards and commissions, with community-interested people, and finding ways to make our work connect with the work of the community, and of course, working directly with the Friends of the Robbins Library, such a fantastic support group. When the former library director Andrea Nicolay decided to move on to be close to family, I saw new opportunities to support the community, to learn, and to grow. I'm so grateful to the hiring committee and to Sandy for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve the community of Arlington in this new role. The pandemic period has brought a lot of clarity, both for libraries and for me personally. In libraries, in our library, we have seen increased use since the pandemic period. In FY '22, we saw our highest circulation in many, many years, as far back as I could easily find data. We circulated over 936,000 physical and electronic items. We're now the fourth-largest lender in the Minuteman Library Network, behind much larger communities like Cambridge, Newton, and Brookline. For me personally, I saw how my job matters every single day in a new way. We saw how much communities missed us when we were closed, when our buildings were closed. We saw how vital our services are to our community, and we saw how much people want to engage with their libraries. And it really brought a new joy to my work and a real meaning to my work. I wanted to share with you the mission of the Robbins Library. The library is a vital community resource. We create opportunities for lifelong learning, meaningful connection, and discovery for all. We offer outstanding collections and services to meet the evolving needs and interests of the Arlington community. I'm looking forward to so much: honoring the public's trust with careful and appropriate budgeting, making sure that our programs and collections continue to meet community needs as they change, bringing new users into the library, and making sure that every single resident of Arlington feels welcome and that there is something useful for them in the library, and improving our spaces, making sure that we are accessible for all, that we are useful and usable, and that we offer warm and inviting spaces. I'm truly excited for the future, and I can't wait to share what comes next with you and everyone in the community.
Well, thank you very much, and I will now turn to my colleagues to see if they have any comments. And, you know, I'm going to start off in the virtual round, so... Just so. I'll tell you what, I'll start. Ms. Mahan? Ms. Mahan?
Sorry for doing the phone and the laptop. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ms. Litten as our new library director. I feel silly saying welcome, because you certainly outlined everything that you've been doing here in town. And as many know, one of my first best jobs was as a library page at the Robbins Library. And I agree with you, when you go into library services, sometimes the worst thing is that you love books. And I served under a director called Jim Fish, who came in and threw out a lot of the books. I almost got fired because I was going and saving books, checking them out so they could stay in. So I want to thank the town manager for the process, had conversations with him to see how it was going along, and doing our best to fill Ms. Nicolay's shoes. But I know that Ms. Litten, Anna, you've already stepped right in there and will bring us out of COVID and moving forward here in Arlington. So thank you so much for accepting this great responsibility, and I know you do well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Mahan, and Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second the motion to approve of Ms. Litten as our library director. And just welcome. I know you've been working in town for a while, and you're doing an excellent job. That's why the town manager hired you, put you in that position, and put the trust in this really important position. You know, I grew up using the libraries in Arlington, and particularly the Fox Library, but also the Robbins Library as I got up a little older. And even to this day, where a lot of the kids transitioned to a virtual lifestyle, so many still rely on the library, and it's important to have that there as a resource to make sure that kids don't forget about the way we used to get our information. And it's a place for kids to go and study, and it's just a really important place for people to come and congregate. And Arlington boasts really excellent libraries, lucky to have two libraries, and they both are very well-run and will continue to be. And again, I look forward to working with you, and welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I have very little to add to those excellent comments, except that I love your vision of what a library is in the community. I think it's a very contemporary and fresh vision, and your background, your interests really communicate that really well, so we're pleased to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mr. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And also, I want to echo the comments of my colleagues. Welcome you as the library director. And just hearing the comments from Mrs. Mahan and Mr. Hurd, that the library has been is a very important resource in the town, as we all know, and they talked about their experiences. My experience was up at the Heights when the Dallin Branch used to be there. My sister was a page in the library, so it just, there were connections. And I'm so impressed with the figures that you cited for the increases in circulation. And I did take a look at the website in advance of the meeting tonight, and I note that this is Library Card Sign-up Month, so hopefully you even increase those numbers further, and some really interesting staff picks for various books about the importance of libraries. So thank you for your enthusiasm that we've seen here tonight, for everything you're doing, and look forward to seeing new initiatives and continued great work at the library.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi. And yes, I echo what everyone has said. And I think I might have mentioned this when the former director talked with us, and they mentioned the increase in circulation, and had mentioned that we were like the fourth in circulation. And I think it is even better than that, because I think if you take into account the size of our population, you know, we might rank, I mean, at number one, because we are smaller, you know, than those other communities. And so it's a good job, it's a good indication of how much people are using the system. And I know, because I've seen some preliminary data from the survey, I mean, people really do use the library a lot, I mean, they care about it a lot. It may be a function of the fact that the people who fill out the surveys are people who are inclined to the libraries. We'll see. But anyways, it's great. And the more I see about what libraries are doing, I mean, they're really doing a lot to attract people who do tend to get answers to basic questions online. And so I've seen some cases where they're doing 3D printing and really helping people to learn with things that they just can't have at home, which is what I think libraries have always been about, you know? So thank you very much. I'm glad that we have a great system where we can draw from the inside, even when we compare to the outside. So thank you for being here and for staying. And with that, a motion to accept, you know, Ms. Litten in the position of library director by Ms. Mahan, and a second by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Janice?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Truly appreciate your trust.
Take care. So moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes for the September 28, 22 meeting. Reappointments to the zoning board of appeals, terms expire on October 30, 2025. That will be Christian Klein and Patrick Hanlon. Number five for approval: Arlington Open Studios lawn signs through November 12, 2022. Tom Formacola, ACA Executive Director, and Anna-Lise Ruggles, ACA Communications Director. Number six, a request for a special one-day beer and wine license on October 15, 2022 at Woodmore Robbins House for a private event, White Mountain Ski Runners. Number seven, a request for a special one-day license, one-day beer and wine license, October 22, 2022, Robbins Library Reading Room for a private event, Rihanna M. Ash. And number eight, request special one-day beer and wine license, November 11, 2022, Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a private event, Dora Gemere. And so with that, and I'm going to keep an eye on both firsthand. Mr. Helmut?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval with a brief remark of appreciation for the gentleman. We are reappointing tonight to the ZBA. I think they're both joining since Zoom. I know that we're probably not going to speak with them, but I don't want the moment to pass without recognizing the hard work that the ZBA does. It's one of certainly the busiest and most demanding town boards, commissions, and committees, and they both perform exemplary service. And I'm thrilled that they are rejoining and up for more. So I move approval of consent agenda.
Okay, great. And I saw Mrs. Mahan's hand go up, but I also saw Mr. Corsi's hand go up with Mr. Helmut, so you get the second if you want.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And I also will echo Mr. Helmut's remarks. I just saw firsthand over the past 18 months that the fine work that Mr. Klein and Mr. Hanlon have done for the ZBA, and really happy that they are willing to accept reappointments.
And so, Ms. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's ZBA all day, all night. Thank you to Mr. Klein and Mr. Hanlon. All of us have been to different ZBA meetings in different capacities, zoning board of appeals. I definitely appreciate those, them volunteering their time. We couldn't afford to pay them. And I also want to take advantage of the opportunity that we did receive a letter of resignation from one of our zoning board of appeals members. So I will leave that to the chair and the Select Board office to begin that process of advertising and conducting the interviews. But in light of the heavy vote, similar to other committees and commissions here in Arlington, that the zoning board of appeals has, I know we'll move on that as expeditiously as we can. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And so on that same...
Well, I was going to say the same thing as everyone else. I won't reiterate it, but again, I think the fact that we all read, pulled something off a consent agenda to discuss is certainly a testament to the work that these two gentlemen have done. And again, happy to see them continuing, because it's a board where experience matters. So happy to be reappointing both to the ZBA.
Yes, yes, and I agree. And I mentioned this a couple of times, maybe even more than a couple during town meeting, but Mr. Hanlon, I mean, his writing is just such a joy to read. I mean, he tends to write a lot, but it's such an easy read, and I always learn a lot when I read his emails. So definitely happy to have them both joining us or continuing on the ZBA. And so, one, a motion by Mr. Helmut, and a second by Mr. Corsi on the consent agenda. Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Janice?
Great. Thank you. Oh, rolling along onto appointments. So for the ACAC Grants Committee, we have Kristin Bedard, term to expire on October 30th, 2025. So is Kristin here?
Yes, I'm here.
I see you there. All right. Thank you for joining us. Do you want to say a few words?
I'm really pleased for this opportunity. I'm a big believer in local community arts, and I've had the opportunity to join the committee in several meetings now, and I'm just thrilled for this opportunity to be a part of helping the arts flourish in town. Grew up here in Arlington, and again, just really happy and grateful for this opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. So I'll turn to my colleagues. See Mr. Hurd's hand?
Move approval and welcome. Thank you for stepping up to serve.
So I have a motion by Mr. Hurd.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Corsi, and I see Ms. Mahan's hand go up. Do you want to say something?
I was going to second it, but I do want to thank Ms. Bedard, looked over your submissions for this position, and I know it's something this committee are certainly well versed in and have already contributed so much that we really couldn't thank you enough. And again, it sounds corny, but Arlington truly is blessed by our residents, some who have been here, grown up here, and some who have moved here later on. And I'm always impressed by the caliber of people, not only by their experience, but by their dedication. And I just want to thank you, Kristin, for stepping into this and helping to continue to make the arts flourish here in Arlington. It's amazing, because I didn't realize how much the committee could be doing until they started doing it. And I've come to expect so much, and you guys go above and beyond. So thank you so much, and thank you for agreeing to do this.
Thank you, Diane.
And I just need to get back to the screen with you all. So if someone raised their hand, I didn't see them. So, okay. So I will close by saying, yes, indeed, we definitely appreciate you joining the commission, and it is great that you have been a resident of Arlington. And I am looking through your resume again, your CV, and it's, as with almost everyone that signs up for volunteer work, I mean, impressive people in town. And so with that, I will accept the motion by Mr. Hurd and a second by Mr. Corsi. Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
It's Janice.
Thank you. Take care. So...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Hi, ma'am. I'm going to recuse myself on the next one. Mr. Nagel is lucky enough to be married to my sister, Sarah, so... Though, not, and I have a legal obligation to recuse myself, just in conjunction with past practices, I'm going to recuse myself for the next vote.
All right. And we'll get in touch with you, let you know when we're on to the next item. So, okay, so next we have the appointment to the Arlington Housing Trust Fund, Vic Marie Santiago and Jack Nagel, and their terms expire on October 31st, 2023. So we'll turn first to Vic Marie. If you want to say a few words?
Hi, everyone. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to contribute to this wonderful community. I live in Arlington since 2007. I'm from Puerto Rico. And we felt welcome for this community, and this is my way that I want to contribute. So I...
Thank you. And Mr. Nagel, you want to say anything?
Sure. No, I'm really looking forward to collaborating with all the members of the housing trust and other agencies in town. There's a ton of potential that exists, and, you know, selfishly on the housing authority side, I think that, you know, there's really a lot of ways in which we could, you know, make a big impact by being part of this. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. So I'll turn to my colleagues. I already see Mr. Helmut's hand up. So, Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as my colleagues know, I'm the Select Board's designated representative to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so I would love to seize the privilege of making the motion to appoint these two exemplary individuals. Also, by way of explanation and some background to my colleagues, the board, we, these are filling two vacancies, one of them happened several months ago, and the other one a bit more recently. But, so Mr. Nagel, of course, is well-known to the board, and will be representing the Arlington Housing Authority. And Ms. Santiago is deeply impressive, new person to the community, that as soon as I read her resume and her letter, I was as excited as Ms. Lyndham and Ms. Kelleher were who worked with her. So I am just thrilled to have you both to work with as colleagues on this board as we do some really exciting work. So thank you for your willingness.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd, and I see Ms. Mahan. Hannah?
Going to do the phone, so I will happily second my colleague, Mr. Helmut's motion, and I am thrilled by both Ms. Santiago and Mr. Nagel. I, growing up, I lived on Gardner, Memorial, and Freeman, so I didn't know it was Monody Manor. I knew of Kelvin Manor, because that was sort of everything I had loved to ascribe to. But I know what the challenges are in terms of not only reaching those who live in our housing complexes, but those, my family always rented all throughout the time growing up in Arlington, Egerton Road, Bacon Street, and so on and so forth. So I know what it's like. I know sometimes when affordability is a main issue for someone, sometimes there's a tendency to not really connect to some of the opportunities that exist. And part of that is because trying to get the right voices that can establish that connection. And I think Vic Marie and Jack, I love the both, the tie-ins. It's sort of a representative of trust with tenants that Vic Marie has, will have, and continue to have, as well as Jack with the housing authority. I'm thrilled for having that tie-in. Not that any other member of the committee also cannot accomplish the same, but I definitely look as the new young blood on the committee for the two of you, just to add your voices and really reaching out, not only getting the message across, but creating an environment of not acceptability, but just getting everybody comfortable to that. We all have the same goal. Nobody's no better, no worse, and we're just trying to make everything better for everybody. So I'm really thrilled with you all, and I know you'll be hearing definitely from me and my colleagues in various times throughout the year. And as always, we remain available to you, but I'm not going to tell you all how to do your job, because I've certainly read what you submitted, and you're ready to hit the ground running. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Ms. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, I just want to thank Ms. Santiago and Mr. Nagel for their willingness to serve on the trust as trustees. And also, with these appointments, we truly are now in alignment with the town bylaws in terms of the composition of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So I'm happy for that and appreciate the work that Mr. Helmut has done representing us on the trust.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Corsi. And actually, my favorite part about, well, one of my favorite parts about being on the Select Board is reading the CVs and getting a chance to comment on them, because anyone can read them, you know? But I get to say a few things. And first off, for Vic Marie, love the format of your CV. I'm going to imitate it. It's just really played out very nicely, and with the skills and software, it's just, I like it. I like it a lot. And then, of course, there's a substance to it, which is very impressive, I mean, and there was a word I wanted to look up that I just haven't had a chance to yet, photogrammetry, you know? So can you just tell me quickly what that is?
Yeah, photogrammetry, yeah. It is a composition of different photos, and you can create virtual 3D models.
Oh, cool. Nice, nice. You know, well, I think certainly the architectural background will come in handy in just thinking about housing and what we can do with housing and affordable housing to make it, you know? Make the housing that people live in dignified, because just because it's affordable doesn't mean that it has to look or feel any worse than something that costs a lot less, you know? And so I think that'll be certainly something that you could help us with, not only in Arlington, but just in general, I mean, community-wide and region-wide. And so thank you very much. And Mr. Nagel, you're just all over the place in terms of stuff that you've done, and you strike me as a person that can not only handle abstractions, but also can get in there and do the work with your hands. I'm pretty much just an abstract guy, and so fixing a light pole is like, I would call John or Jack, as you say that you are. And so I'm just curious, though, because given your background, how did you get into this field?
Well, I worked for the Department of Transitional Assistance before I worked for the housing authority. And while I was there, I was getting my master in public administration, and then realized that a housing authority, you touch not only the public administration in regards to, you know, capital planning, trying to impact, you know, the community in general, but then you also do the social service aspect, too. So it seemed like everything in one, so that really that's what pushed me in that direction.
Great, great. Well, thank you. Thank you both. And so, a motion to accept the appointments by Mr. Helmut and a second by Ms. Mahan. Mr. Heim?
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
So four of zero vote. Note for the record, please, that Mr. Hurd recused himself from both the discussion and vote. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, guys. Take care. And so, all right, so Mr. Hurd is back. And then we'll move on to item number 11, Board of Registers. And Rebecca Belt, Beltlion? Beltlion, term expires on March 31st, 2025. Rebecca?
Yeah, hold on.
No problem.
Hello.
Hi.
Am I on?
Did I get the last name correct?
Oh, I need a PIN. Asking me for a PIN. My last name is Betlion.
Betlion, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Betlion.
Betlion, yes, hi.
Thank you. So, so you want to say a few words?
Sure. So I've lived in Arlington for the past 11 years. I'm a single working mom, and my daughter is a sophomore at the high school. She started at the Thompson, at Stratton, and then Thompson, and now she's at the high school. I've also lived in Arlington back 93 to 98, and I worked in Arlington from 91, since 1991 to present, a cumulative of about 25 years in Arlington. So I know the community. I know a lot of children and families. I know a lot of children that probably are a lot older now that I might not recognize. But when I heard that this position was going to be open, I've always been a civics and a history buff. And so I thought, you know what? I'm interested in doing this. And I talked to Phil Lahonez on the RTC, and also John Warden, who held the position before he resigned. And it sounded like something that I would be willing to do. I've never served in, in government, in any kind of capacity, in a town, town government. So I thought it would be a good opportunity to serve the people in my community and the town of Arlington.
Thank you. So I see Mrs. Mahan, hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd definitely like to move approval of Ms. Betlion's appointment to the Board of Registers. Along with my thanks, elections have always been very important, having, having grown up in Arlington. But election officials, jobs certainly have grown exponentially and really have never been so vital as they are right now. And we need the proper balance, we need the dedication that Ms. Betlion has. Are you a Rebecca or a Becky?
I'm Rebecca, I'm Becca. So yeah, Rebecca is fine.
Rebecca, I have a Rebecca, so she goes by four different names. So that's okay.
Yep, yep.
But I, I do want to thank you. I know you know the importance of this position. Again, I sort of, not sort of, growing up here, one of my other first jobs when I was newly married was working for my husband's aunt, Anne Mahan Powers, just as an election worker. And I'd sort of got a little introduction to, to me, election was you go in and vote, whoever's sitting there shuts you off. I didn't know anything about the Board of Registers, but now, first as a parent and then as an elected official, I've certainly, A, seen the importance, and B, seen that position, along with other elected officials' positions, really grow and become vital. So this is, again, one of the committees, it's not a committee, it's a board, one of the boards, especially around elections, that's really vital. I know you'll do a fantastic job, and I can tell that you definitely have the acumen to really go in clean slate and eye on the prize, which is ensuring our elections and making sure everybody who wants to can vote. So I thank you very much, Ms. Betlion. Rebecca.
Mr. Hurd?
Like to second that motion, and again, just reiterate everything that Mrs. Mahan said very eloquently, and just thank you for your willingness to serve.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I will simply say thank you also, Dean. Just so you know, you know, it can become a very exciting gig, because in my election, you know, there was a recount. And so you got to spend, you know, a long, I forget what day of the week it was, it was a nice, long day, hearing, you know, hand-counted ballots, Dean. So I got to get another glimpse of why this role is important. So, so, so thank you very much. And so on a motion to accept the appointment by Mrs. Mahan, and a second by Mr. Hurd, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Take care. Good night.
Good night.
Item number 12, CDBG Subcommittee Appointment, Judith Gilu?
Yes, hi.
Hi. Did I get that right?
Yes, absolutely.
I did?
Thank you. Sorry?
How do you pronounce it again? Gilu?
Yu, Guiyu.
Yu, okay, all right. I'm not doing it quite right, but a little closer than before, you know. So do you want to say a few words?
Yes, sure. So I arrived with my family in Arlington 11 years ago from France, and I'm a lawyer by training, a business lawyer by training in France. But then moving to the U.S., I had to kind of reinvent what I could be doing. So I started volunteering almost, I would say professionally. Like I worked for Planned Parenthood for two years and a half on their hotline. Then I worked for Reel, for the French consulate. And, and four years ago, I started working for the Department of Children and Families, mostly from the office in Arlington. And now through COVID, we moved through WebEx, and we cover the whole Massachusetts. And through that work, I reviewed the situation of kids in foster care. So I became very aware of the problem of fair housing and economic opportunities and things like that. And during COVID, I also volunteered at Eats, the food pantry in Arlington. And through them, I received their newsletter, and that's how I got wind of the opportunity to serve with the, sorry, with the CDBG Subcommittee. And I thought, oh, that could be a good way for me to understand better how my town works. One year ago, we became American citizens, so I took a class with the Arlington Community Education that was actually called Guide to Town Government. And I couldn't see right away how I could serve and give back to a community that really welcomed us so well. And then this opportunity happened, so I thought, let's give it a try, and maybe I can mix my experience with DCF on one hand, and my experience as a lawyer on the other hand, to try to help Arlington community.
Great. Well, well, thank you very much, Dean. And so we have two colleagues here who are from the select board that are on the, on the committee, so I'm going to just go to them, Dean, for the motion and the second. So Mr. Hurd, hands up. So, Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. I'd like to move approval, and again, welcome, and thank you for your willingness to serve. My dad was on the then Board of Selectmen and the now Select Board for a long time. And when I first got elected, he said to me, get on this CDBG committee. It's the best committee to be on, because all you get to do is give out money to people. Everyone loves people on the CDBG committee. And it, you know, it's a great committee, and it's really important, the things we do, because we do get a lot more requests than we generally have funds for. So we do have to do some work and kind of prioritize things. But it's also, a lot of the money we give is spent in the year that we give it. We can see the immediate benefit of the work that we do and the immediate impact of the funds that we're able to give out directly to the community. So it is, it is a good committee to serve on, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And Mrs. Mahan?
I would definitely second my colleague, Mr. Hurd's motion. He covered a lot of this, but I want to thank you, Ms. Guiyu, for, and look forward to meeting you. When CDBG first started out, we would meet once a year. We're now up to anywhere from three-plus times a year, meet to vote. So sometimes that means four to six meetings. And that's because of the times that we're in, when new federal funding, on top of the CDBG funds, like the CARE Act, you know, everything out of COVID, but now there's also other packages being discussed. And the other thing that CDBG has sort of evolved into, and I think you would be a great person doing this with your background, not someone like you who's grown up in Arlington, and, you know, it's sort of puts their toe in a lot of different pools, so I know what's out there. But the other thing is, a lot of people don't know what grants we give out, what programs, social programs are available to them. So we sort of have become advocates for either answering questions, but sometimes just going out and advocating for these programs. And you will be a good ombudsman to do that. So I thank you so much with your, congratulations on your citizenship. I'm a court reporter, so I have all due respect for attorney esquires, and I look forward to seeing you real soon on the CDBG Subcommittee meeting. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to thank Ms. Guiyu for your willingness to serve. Congratulations on your citizenship and for your volunteerism in the, in the past year. And I think you will find, I haven't gone on to the CDBG Subcommittee yet, but I, I hear it's really interesting work, and I know they will value what you bring to the Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mrs. Corsi. So, all right, so I will say a few words, Dean, and, and of course, I express my appreciation, Dean. And, and again, a very impressive resume and CV, and, and I have to say, the Mercuria trading line, I, I was really fascinated by that. I'm reading the line, and then I see the ellipses, and I thought, wow. It's like, it's so interesting that she just couldn't include it all. And it just makes me want to move on. I think I'm going to have to use that technique, me, sometime, you know, on my CVs. It's the first time I've seen, it's very clever use of ellipses. But also, you know, the volunteerism, it was really impressive, Dean. And the Planned Parenthood aspect in particular, because of the, the great work that you do in helping people with STIs, Dean. And as you said, you give people objective information to deal with, I mean, difficult decisions, Dean. And so, so that in and of itself makes me feel that, having someone who understands, I mean, challenging, the challenging positions that people can be in, I think will make a really good candidate, you know, good person on, on the committee. And I also noticed that you have been involved with the Arlington Relay for Life, Dean. So you really have been involved with the community. So thank you very much, Dean. And I enjoy reading what CDBG does, Dean, when they report out. And so I will not be competing, you know, for a position on the committee. I'll just let the people who are good at it continue doing, they're good working, and you'll be one of them. So with that, on a motion by Mr. Hurd and a second by Mrs. Mahan, to accept her appointment, Gil appointment, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. So on to open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation. In accordance with the policy underneath, under which the open forum was established, it should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. So do we have anyone?
Seeing no hands raised, maybe one. I don't have a name. It's a phone-in listener.
All right. All right. Hello?
Yes, hello. Am I unmuted?
Yes. Can you?
Okay. This is, yeah, this is Steve Moore. I live on Piedmont Street and a member of Arlington Tree Committee. I have two things I'd like to quickly speak on tonight. First is, you might remember about three weeks, a month ago, and in 2621 Hillside Ave item came up numerous times. It was continued and then recontinued. And I've seen nothing on the agenda lately, and I'm wondering what the status of that item is from either Mr. Heim or whoever might know about that. Maybe Mr. Fuller?
Well, generally, you don't answer questions during open forum, you know. And so we'll certainly take that as some, something, you know, to answer in, in potentially the next meeting, since you've asked me, and I'm certainly curious about that myself. But, so, anything else?
Well, it was continued to tonight, and it's not on the agenda. That's why I'm asking.
Hey, it's not on the agenda, so it wasn't continued to tonight, you know, so, so.
Oh, I believe, I thought it was. Okay, well, then, never mind. I am still interested in that particular item and its disposal. But the second thing I wanted to speak on was, just to add my voice to your voices relative to the reappointment to the zoning board of appeals. I am the tree committee's liaison to that board, so I attend all of the meetings. And I've been doing that probably for close to two years now, maybe a year and a half. And the two gentlemen, Mr. Klein and Mr. Hanlon, I, it is so impressive, the dedication and hard work that they've put into this. As you pointed out, Mr. Chair, the opinions are critical and well-written, and they have to be just right, and they almost always are. The multiple 40B projects that have been on their, on the table the past two years, plus now, a new one coming up that I've heard about, just these, these men work very hard, and the whole board works very hard. And I just wanted to say, I've been so impressed by the professionalism of that board with, that I've been exposed to over the past year and a half. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Steve Moore. So I don't see anyone else? All right. And so we move on to an update by me on the town manager search process. So we are moving forward at a nice pace. I think we are on track with our timeline. And probably tomorrow, if not, then, then certainly early next week, we will put, we put out an announcement of a forum for our residents, so that they can give us some input as to what they would like to see in our next town manager. The format of the forum, of the forum has not been completely determined yet. We, Mr. Corsi and myself, will be meeting with a consultant, you know, to work that out, you know. And there will also be a survey going out, and it will extend at least a week before the forum, and, and extend probably a week after the forum. And so we'll be collecting data that way. And the goal still is to get the statement out at the beginning of December, probably the first week in December. It may very well be that we will want to have a brief meeting to discuss the draft collectively before it goes out, but the intention right now is when the draft statement is created for the consultants to meet with us individually to get our feedback. And if after meeting with us individually, there is a desire, I mean, to, well, we feel that we need to have more discussion as a group, then we'll pull off that meeting, you know. So, so that's it at this point. So if there are any questions, you know, happy to hear them. Okay. All right. You know, so, thank you. And the next update is on a potential overnight parking pilot. So I'm going to read something that I wrote and sent over to Mr. Corsi, and, and I could just talk about the content of it, but I think, reading it, I won't miss anything. And, and right now, I- And, and, hey, I could just talk about the content of it, but I think, um, reading it, I won't miss anything. And, and, uh, right now, I, based on what we discuss, I will adjust what I've written and then put that into, uh, the document for the next meeting. You know, and, 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 and then if it warrants a vote, uh, we can vote on it. But the intention is not to vote on anything now, because you're just seeing, you're just hearing us. I mean, and so we can have as much of a discussion as we want now, but potentially have more of a discussion, I mean, next week. And then if we decide that we want to vote, uh, vote on it. But that will be the agenda that will have a vote item or the vote word in the line item. So, so here we go. Um, so after several discussions with the town manager, the director of Public Works, the chief of Arlington Police Department, Captain Kirin and Officer Ruto, we, that is, Mrs. Corsi and myself, have concluded that if we are to move forward with implementing a pilot to explore reducing restrictions on overnight parking, then we do so beginning next May at the earliest for the following reasons. One, it allows us to have more conversations with the community, both formally and informally. And two, it gives us the necessary time to work out processes and details with DPW, APD, the treasurer's office, the parking department, and the select board's office. Tentatively, we are thinking that the pilot would run for forty-six months. After that, we would assess the pilot as well as obtain feedback from residents and staff and determine, and then determine whether to, one, maintain or not change the current overnight parking pilot, policy. Two, change overnight parking policy in accordance with the factors that we learned from the pilot. Or three, conduct another, another pilot. Were we to decide on changing our overnight parking restrictions, those changes likely would not go into effect until January 2024. Similarly, another pilot would likely not take place until sometime in 2024. As we discuss the possibility of doing the pilot next year, please note that we will need to adjust the way in which the town charges residents who utilize the municipal lots for overnight parking. For those who pay on an annual basis, we would adjust the annual fee based on the length of the pilot. For example, if we adopted a four-month pilot, we reduce the annual charge by one-third. Of course, this would require coordination with the treasurer's office and/or the parking department and possibly the select board's office. So even if we won't be ready to make a decision and to commit to doing the pilot, as long as doing the pilot during the middle of 2023 is a possibility, we should start the coordination with those departments as soon as possible. So as I said, we can discuss, um, this tonight as much as we want. Uh, but next week, we'll need to, uh, at least decide on how to, whether we want to contact, I mean, the treasurer's office, I mean, and the parking department and tell them to be prepared, I mean, to, um, charge people less for, uh, the upcoming year in anticipation that we may do the pilot, so that we aren't in a situation where people have paid and then we have to refund, because that's a little, that's a bit more complicated than just not taking the money in the first place. I mean, so, um, with that, and I'll open it up. Well, as I say, um, to folks from my experience, oh, there's a hand. Okay, Mrs. Mahan?
Uh, please don't take my silence as anything except for, um, I'm gonna assume that after tonight, we'll all receive a copy of what the chair has just read, so that we can, um, go over it. Um, I was paying close attention, but the, um, I want to thank you for all the details that are included in there, um, and my brain just kind of froze at about the fourth intersection of the different action steps that, that you've outlined, um, in terms of, um, possibilities. So what I'd like to do is, um, definitely, uh, uh, read and reread, uh, the materials that you've prepared for us. And I'll definitely have comments and, and or questions at the next meeting where we have this as an agenda item. So, um, I, I don't want to, you know, start asking questions, and then I have retained everything you said, and I ask a really dumb question instead of just a dumb one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no problem, and I appreciate that, I mean, and, and, um, and I'll say that one of the reasons that I didn't put this out was because, I wasn't sure if I was want, going to want to edit it more, uh, before presenting it tonight. You know, and, and so, uh, I wouldn't want, we had put it out two days from, ago, and it would have been locked down. And, and, and due to, um, some personal, well, I was just traveling more than I expected to, you know, last few weeks, and so I wasn't able to get this to Mr. De Corsi until.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we may have lost the other members for, for a moment, um, on the Zoom.
No, I can only hear you through the laptop, and you're no longer up on the screen. And I can't see you. Oh, you're back.
Yeah, I still see them.
Hear us now?
Yeah.
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yeah.
So then I'll turn to, um, Mr. Heim, I mean, uh, to find out, I mean, when, when is the earliest I can get what I, that statement that I read to my colleagues?
When's the earliest you can distribute it?
Yeah.
I think if it's just for informational purposes, if you distribute it through the, uh, your administrator, you can distribute it for just information.
Okay.
What you can engage is substantive discussion.
Right, okay, all right. So then I can get that out, I mean, tomorrow, you know, so I'll send it to you tonight or tomorrow morning. And, okay, great, so then, so then you all can get it, I mean, and then, and then, um, we can have, uh, robust discussions, I mean, and, and, um, I, I'm sorry, I see Mr. Sean in here. We're, we can keep going, okay, all right, uh, so we're all set to go. So, um, any other comments or questions? All right, all right, well, well, thanks for your attention. And, and move on to item number fifteen, I mean, and, and, um, so, he, gonna, um, try and stay on top of some sections of our goals, you know. Uh, and, and, and so, uh, this one, as I say, it's gonna be an emphasis on public communications, customer service, and resident engagement. And, and the one thing I want to have us try to work through, and probably won't get through tonight, is how to handle email. You know, uh, uh, 'cause we, we have situations where people send, um, us all email, you know, and when the email comes to all of us, I feel that, uh, it is my responsibility as chair to either respond to it, uh, or ask one of you to respond to it. And I'm fine with that, if everyone else is fine with that, you know. Uh, in the cases where only one of us gets it, or let me rephrase that. When we, we, we receive an email, uh, with just one of us in the to field, sometimes it's not clear whether everyone else has received it or not, you know. And, and so, uh, the, of course, nothing I say will stop anyone from responding however they want. The goal, though, is to, one, uh, reduce the inefficiency, I mean, if five of us receive the same message, but we're not aware of the other ones receiving it. I mean, but also to make the answer potentially available, should we find, I mean, that answer useful. And, and, I, I want to have the conversation in public, well, one, because we need to, but also because, uh, it'll be helpful to have the input from the town council as to what we can do, uh, within the confines of open meeting law. And let me just back up a little bit and say that, uh, recently, we did create an alias, I mean, for, uh, the administrative staff, I mean, so then people go to the website, they can send mail to, to Lauren, um, and Ashley, and, and Marie through the SB Admin alias. Uh, I am considering asking, I mean, that we also create an alias, I mean, for all of us, I mean, so that, I mean, that one address will go to all of us, and, and also, uh, to the administrative staff. And the reason I say that is because I've been informed by the staff that any mail that they get is automatically included into, uh, the, the record. And, and, and so it is searchable through novice agenda, correct, Ashley? You know, and, and if people ask for it to be included in our meetings that correspondence received, I mean, and that's when it's put on the agenda.
That's the only time it would be put on. An email that's just sent to us wouldn't just automatically be put on an agenda.
Right.
Unless they ask to be placed on correspondence received.
Right, right, but, but if they don't ask for it to be correspondence received, it's still put into.
If it pertains to something on the agenda.
Right, okay, I mean, um, so, so, so then it's really a matter of how do we, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was honestly just clearing my throat.
Okay, no problem, okay, so, so, so then it really is a matter of how we want to track emails that we get that people don't want included on the agenda.
So if a citizen sends you an email, we don't see that. The only emails we see are if they go to SB Admin or us individually.
Right, but if they send to SB Admin, but they don't request that be put on the, as, they don't ask that it be indicated as correspondence received, then it doesn't get. I mean, okay.
There are some things that don't necessarily need to be placed on correspondence received.
Right.
If it's something we can answer within the office.
Right.
And doesn't need a board vote or a referral to another committee.
Right.
We would handle it administratively.
Right, right, right.
If it needs a referral to TAC or we think the board outside of board info on a Friday.
Right.
Other than that, for example, you know, the one that's on correspondence received tonight.
Right.
They had asked to be on correspondence received, where it could potentially need a vote from a different board, but needs referral from the select board.
Right.
If it's an email regarding just questions about parking or something we can answer that doesn't need a vote of the board, that would not be, we would not put that on as correspondence received.
Right, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Chair, if I can just say one thing.
Sure.
The only, the only thing that I would just add as preliminary to this discussion is that the board chair still controls the agenda. So to the extent that correspondence received gets put on an agenda and is addressed by the board, it's up to the board to decide what's on its agenda. It doesn't mean that correspondence hasn't been received. I understand that you're making some, you, you guys are discussing how you want to handle different parts of public correspondence, but I just want to sort of separate the fact that correspondence is received from its placement on the agenda as a matter that gets some kind of public acknowledgement and discussion at a, uh, meeting of the board. Does that make sense?
I was up to you right until the last, I guess I'm trying to understand the distinction that you're making, you know, so I, I, I had it, and then I thought, I, I thought I had it, and then I lost it at the very end, so, so maybe just repeat the last two sentences.
Mr. Chair, for a minute.
Sure.
The board receives a lot of correspondence.
Right.
The, the real meaningful difference between correspondence received and, as we term it, and all the other correspondence the board gets, isn't necessarily who exactly it goes to. It's its placement on the agenda as a matter that is going to be in some way, shape, or form publicly addressed, even if it's just, we received this letter from so-and-so, it's duly received.
Right.
Um, so I, I just want to caution that, that, that the distinction between who gets sent what, we get a lot of correspondence, for example, from the state or from, you know, another authority that might only go to the chair of the select board because of the nature of the correspondence.
Right.
That does, some of that makes its way onto the agenda because it requires some action of the board.
Right.
Some of it doesn't require any action of the board. It's obviously correspondence, it's obviously received.
Right.
The difference is, is that it's not put on the agenda as something that's gonna be publicly addressed by the board.
Right.
Um, and I understand that part of what you're talking about is trying to discern what criteria are gonna make it be on the agenda and what aren't. But I just, I just want to be clear that part of it is always gonna be discretionary.
Right, and, and really what I'm getting at, though, is, is how is it that email, I mean, to the board can be placed in a location where it is searchable, I mean, and people can find it? Because my understanding now is that the only way to search, I mean, for email that has been sent to the board is if it's on novice agenda.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, you suggesting that searchable by board members or searchable by all other persons?
Uh, both.
Okay.
Particularly board members, but also, I mean, also, also the public sense, I mean, since anything sent to us is part of the public record anyways, I mean, uh.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
There may be some things that are not part of the public record automatically in the sense that there are many exemptions to the public records laws. If you get sent sensitive information, especially if it's something about, like, an employee, for example, that isn't automatically something that the board has to make searchable and discoverable.
Right.
Usually we get a request, the records access officer, Mr. Feeney typically, um, you know, runs through a process to make sure that this is something that does not, that is not exempt from disclosure.
Right, yeah, so, so anything, I mean, clearly there is sensitive stuff that we get from you, for example, that wouldn't be, but, but any, any other email, I mean, I'm just trying to, to discern, trying to get emails sent to us made more easily available, I mean, to ourselves and others. And I'm gonna stop now, because I have more to say, but I see Mr. Hurd's hand up. Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I guess, two correspondence received, I mean, that is a part of the agenda going back to the time if it was items that were mailed to the select. If it was literally before email, so, there's just, as we're trying to infer, there is no, we have confusion sometimes among residents that says, you know, my email was supposed to be on correspondence received. There's no right to have, or obligation of the select board to put any correspondence on correspondence received. That's, that's really just another, an opportunity for whoever the chair is or the office to put certain correspondence in front of the board. So, I mean, I think in continuing with past practices, we would have either items that are sent to the board that a board member forwards to the chair, forwards to the office and says, please put this on correspondence received, or items that the chair or the board want to put in front of the board. And it's not necessarily a situation where someone sends us an email and says, please put this on correspondence received. I think in most cases we would do that, but it's not a requirement. Um, in, as far as, I don't think there, I, I have certainly nothing to hide in my emails, and people can log in and, and see what I, I get emailed to me. But, I mean, there's public records requests for particular emails where people can put a public records request on a certain subject, and we have to produce any emails that we have. I don't know that there's a desire or really, i- if it's the right of, of citizens to just go through all of our emails. And like Attorney Heim said, there's the emails that are sensitive, there's emails that have to be determined whether or not they can be disclosed. So I think to, to the extent that people want us to see our emails, if it pertains to a particular subject, they can do a public records request. And, and then we have a public, we have so many of these requests that we have a public records office, officer that handles these requests, and that's how people would access our emails. But I don't think there would be any place, either on our agendas or on the town website, where some people, where people would just be able to search any emails that we, we have received without them being produced via the public records request process. And I think that's how generally they receive our emails. And to, as far as who responds, we get emails that have all of us on it, and we can't reply all because of the open meeting law. So, I mean, I think it's just the discretion of individual board members, what emails they want to respond to. There could be instances where me and Eric have the same thing, uh, want to respond to two, two different emails, and we can respond to that person individually. I don't think we need a coordinated effort, because there's emails that I respond to and some emails that either tone or subject matter, I decide not to respond to. Again, that's, that's a member, that's the discretion of the individual board members. So, I, I mean, I'm, so I'm just, I'm not sure we need a centralized way of handling that outside of how it's handled currently. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Give me a chance to, um, um.
Turn on my video? Yeah, I've lost it. Yeah, I can't, I can't, yeah.
Ask.
Okay, yeah, so that way Mr. Hurd can see me like nodding, I mean, when I'm agreeing with them, you know, so, Ms. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I didn't see it, maybe you're shaking if you don't agree, but, um, I'm, I'm very hesitant and not in favor of adding another sort of email communication vehicle. Um, I know we all have our email addresses, then we have our town email addresses, which I did not want, um, for the case in point of what happens now, which is I'm, I'm at a, you know, thirty to fifty percent rate of people who contact me through the town email, um, that I get it, um, and I don't know maybe if this is something Mr. Poole or our town manager and, um, our new IT director could possibly solve, it was a sort of a promise or a, uh, when, when it was first posed about myself having the town email account, I was afraid it would slip through the cracks along with my Verizon account, and I was told that IT could very easily, um, if anyone emails me at my D Mahan, whatever it is, town dot Arlington dot M A U S, that, um, IT department could automatically, when that comes in, send it to my Verizon account so that I wouldn't miss any of those. Well, that's never happened, and I know I've run, uh, across, um, at least a dozen times a year that either somebody else gives me a heads up or the person, um, either I do, do finally get through the town account or they email me at Verizon and then I explain my apologies I didn't get it, so my fear is creating this third opportunity, it's gonna be yet another way that, um, somebody could fall, uh, through the cracks, so, I don't know, maybe, I, I would, would ask Mr. Poole, were you Mr. Chairman, to con, if he, if he could, contact the IT director and see if there is any way, um, when the first discussions came about this new town email account, which is now an old town meeting account, um, I was told it was a very simple fix, so, um, they could get forwarded to it, I can make sure I get it, that hasn't happened, so I'd like that to be looked into, if it's a cumbersome process, then it won't. So, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of having yet another one as well as Mr. Hurd outlining the open meeting law concerns, um, I think, uh, in terms of emails, I, I like the new, what the chair and the select board office have set up, sort of as administrative SB admin, um, emails, uh, account, I think that's great and, and we should continue on with that, that's something that I, um, myself and current and former colleagues really pushed, the former town manager, Mr. Chastelain, to sort of set up, to try to get some things off the platter that never came to fruition, so, um, and I know I've had conversations with Mr. Poole about that, um, but I think in terms of, I understand what you're saying in terms of emails, if, you know, if we all get it individually and how many of us respond, respond, that's fine, I know I've always had a practice, even before email, it used to be zero access to send it out, but, um, I consulted with town council that I can't directly email you all, but if I truly get something, A, that I'm not answering, opining, or given a position on, and B, it's purely information, that as long as I funnel it through the select board office to staff and say, please forward to my colleagues as an FYI, or if I get something that is sensitive, as town council pointed out, and, and maybe employee information or, um, stories or anything like that, that's something that I send to, um, either town council or the town manager, and under their discretion I get forwarded, so, I, I think if we create yet a third opportunity, um, it's, you know, I, I, it wouldn't be helpful for me because I'm still falling behind on my Verizon account and my town email account, and I think one of the worst things is that, I mean, if we choose not to respond to somebody, then that's, we choose to do that and, you know, whatever ire or whatever we encounter, then we understand that, but I'm just afraid there's gonna be yet another opportunity, there's already one where things for me, um, fall through the cracks, um, and this is just gonna add a third one, so, um, I may lose this fight because that's why I want the town email account, um, because I was told, don't worry if that won't happen and it means it's fixed, or it does happen and it can't get fixed, so, I'm, I'm just not in favor of this, I think, um, uh, I'll stop there, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and, and I was shaking my head, I mean, because it's not really a matter of losing a fight, and it's really, it, this, it's more for us to just kind of determine if we want to change the way that we handle emails and, and maybe we'll gradually change in one direction or another, or maybe not, you know, but I do want to, to, to say that, I mean, when, in the cases where we all get email and, and it's, it's a fairly, let's say straightforward, you know, kind of email, I mean, for me, if I know that one person's responding, I mean, I would just assume not respond, you know, because it's like it's dealt with, you know, and we don't CC each other, meaning, so I don't necessarily know that someone has responded, I think you all have seen a few cases where there's been a transportation-related email and I'll email you all saying, I'll take care of it, and that's not to say to anyone, don't respond, you can go ahead and respond, but it's also to let you know that if you are wondering whether someone's gonna respond, at least you know that, that, that I am planning on responding, I mean, and so, for me, then it would be good if my response was also logged somewhere, I mean, so that you could go and see the response, I mean, so that you, you would not only know that it's been responded to, but you'd also know the, the nature of response, so that if a similar question came up, I mean, you could go and search and see the answer, I mean, and, and respond yourself, like maybe you're having a conversation with someone, you're like, oh, well, this came up, I mean, Len responded, I kind of remember that it was worth, you know, it was a decent response, I mean, and so you'd have a way of getting that information, so that's, that's the rationale behind trying to create kind of a repository for the information, and, and I'll say, just today, there have been a couple of cases where I was thinking, would it be good for people to know about this, so we had, uh, one case where, I mean, someone, I mean, just like, I guess they are jackhammering a wall or something, I mean, and it's been going on for a while, I mean, and, and there's an issue, and so they, they have reached out, I mean, for, I mean, some advice or some, for the time to deal with it, I mean, and the second one is escaping me, um, right now, uh, uh, it might come back to me, but, but anyways, I mean, these were things where I felt that the, it would be good for you to know about them because they came to me, I mean, as chair, and, and I think one was CC to the town manager, I mean, and so I felt that it would be good for folks to see this, I mean, and then to see, uh, the responses, I was just trying to create a mechanism, I mean, so that folks were more aware, I mean, of the communications that were going on and the information that goes along with them because I thought the information, I mean, the responses from the town manager, um, were good, you know, oh, the other one was involving the, the, the electricity, the ACE program, you know, and, and so, so that's the, that's, that's the rationale for having the discussion, you know, right?
No, but I, I'm just saying, we have that conversation when emails started coming to the board, and what, what town council advised, this is kind of what I do, which is, um, I think, I know all of you have gotten emails from the select board office from me, um, but like on the ACE program, the electricity program, as well as the jackhammering, um, I know we're all aware of that, um, so, I'm, I would like to just continue with, uh, the process that the board has been doing, which is, if you think it's information that, you know, you kind of have a Benny and, and the rest of the board doesn't know and you think we should, then funnel it through the select board's office, ask them to forward it to us, um, as an FYI, but like forwarding on the Arlington Community Electricity Program, we all are well aware of that, um, I'm, you know, ever since, uh, the, uh, Fed, uh, raised the interest rate and then, uh, National Grid and N S A said we're increasing sixty-two and eighty-eight percent, um, I, like you all, I mean, I probably get weekly anywhere from eight to fourteen people asking me about ACE and, and the town's electricity program, and I wouldn't send those all to you because you all know that information, you know, that's me just doing my job, which you would do the exact same job, so, um, like, I would just say, I, I would put in a, a plug for, um, if you, if any one of us gets an email and it's sort of new information, you know, how do I get a town day booth application? I'm not gonna forward that to you all because it's, it's, it's not that, but, uh, on something that's sort of pressing and, and brand new, um, whether it's like Mugar, if I get something with Al-Wife CSOs or anything like that, I mean, you all know what you get from me, that it says, please forward to my colleagues as an FYI, um, and to me, that's a, hey, I got this heads up, I'm sending it to you, which I think is what I'm hearing, um, the chairman speak to, um, I think doing it that way versus they, everything that everybody gets goes somewhere as a repository, um, I think it's, I wouldn't, it's not something that I would ask for, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and, and the intention isn't to have everything go on there, uh, it was more so be like the cases where someone did forward it because they felt that it was worthy, I mean, of, of being transmitted to, to their colleagues, I mean, and right now that simply goes to us, I mean, and, and, I mean, I mean, no one else really has access to it, and by that I would think, by anyone else, I'm thinking maybe colleagues coming along later on, I mean, who aren't on the board now, I mean, if there was a way they could search, I mean, like we can search, I mean, for items, I mean, on the agenda through the nervous, the novice agenda platform, then they would have access to, to the, 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 the issue and, and the response, I mean, so, so I'm really not trying to create, I mean, more traffic, you know, I'm really just trying to create a, a way for us to access, I mean, the useful information that's in the email that is being forwarded, I mean, or received, I mean, so, so, that's it, so, look, this is just an idea, you know, and so, so, yeah, I'm not expecting us to vote or anything on it, I'm just kind of putting it out there, something for us to discuss and see if there's potentially a way to, uh, make the email, uh, the information we get through email more available and, and more useful for us, so that's it, you know, Mr. Hellmuth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thanks for raising the issue, I, I do appreciate just the workflow, um, problem that you raised, and, you know, I've noticed it myself, there are some building deficiencies for each of the five of us having public email addresses, which I love, by the way, um, myself, um, but, you know, we, because of, because of the opening law, we can't copy each other's responses, so we don't, we don't know who's responding to what unless, you know, unless somebody tells somebody in a non-substantive way what that is. Uh, the one common thread in this is that for a lot of routine requests, I routinely let our town staff do their job and I will forward requests to the town manager, um, for, for information because they know it firsthand, there's no sense in my, you know, trying to pretend like I know anything, um, and so, and that, and that, in those cases, the town manager and his team, uh, his or her team can, can, um, deal with a duplication and I think, you know, copy and paste as, as needed for, for responses. I, I think it might be useful, Mr. Chair, to think about, you know, in our role identifying the business needs, as we would say in industry, um, the operational and workflow needs and maybe, and maybe lean on our town staff, um, to propose solutions that maybe we haven't considered tonight. I do have some, some serious concerns about the idea of any kind of automatic repository, and I think if I understand town councils, Attorney Hahn's cautions correctly, we couldn't just dump those, you know, those in, we can't have an unvetted, open access, uh, access to anyone's email box for, for various legal reasons and important ones. You know, perhaps, you know, something that would be a whole other product and a whole other, uh, function of a website, you know, would be kind of a screened, invented, manually maintained, um, you know, database of, of things, but that might be overkill. The other thing, the other concern, a caution I have is, is, um, I very much get and appreciate the desire to save, save members the time from needless thing, responding to a request that's already been adequately responded to, but I would want to be careful not to infringe upon members prerogative to do so, uh, as elected officials who answer to the public. And I know that that's not the suggestion here at all by any means, it's, it's not, that's not the intention, but I think the effect could be unintentionally chilling of our, of our desire, if we have one, to respond individuals, individual to people, um, and be responsive to, to the folks who elected us. So, you know, I, I, like I said, I think, I appreciate the workflow challenge here, there is, there is a built-in inefficiency, um, I'd be interested, Mr. Chair, if you want to continue brainstorming maybe with some town staff to try to think about if there are technology solutions that would make it easier, um, and not, and not more work, um, you know, for the rest of us or for the staff, um, but those are just some of my, my thoughts off the bat. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate that, you know, so, so...
Everybody else has spoken, I'll, I'll say a couple of things, I, I, I think this is something that, that, I, I agree with, with comments that both Mr. Hurd and, and Mr. Hellmuth made, that in terms of, um, if there is an issue that comes up and, and you as chair, you get first crack at it, feel it should come before the whole board, it's your prerogative to put it on the agenda, I also agree, there are requests that come in and whether it's just to me directly or the whole select board, and if I think it's something that is an, an issue that the town manager through his staff can, can deal with, I will forward it and say, I received this, wanted to send it along to you, and I think, I think that's, you, you look at it on, on a case-by-case type basis, um, on that, and, and I will note, you know, we have an example of two pieces of correspondence tonight, and this is a little bit different, but we received from Mr. Poole, these are two issues that came up at our last meeting, this is a good use of the correspondence received because we're getting responses to things that came up last meeting, so that's the type of thing we're looking at, but I, I, I agree on the prerogative issue, the other thing is, I may give a different answer to something than you do, so if you're trying to coordinate an answer, my answer, you know, I, I'd like to, to craft my answer for myself as opposed to for the board, if it's something that the board needs to look at on a particular piece of correspondence or an issue that comes up, then it's probably best discussed as part of its, its own agenda item.
Yeah, well, as Mr. Hellmuth noted, I mean, there was, there was never any suggestion that people couldn't respond on their own, I understand what Mr. Hellmuth is saying is that, I mean, it, just the existence of it creates a chilling effect, you know, it's a, it's an argument that, you know, it's, it's not the same, Mr. Slippery Slope argument, but it's always the kind of argument that I often have a problem, you know, using as a reason for not doing something, you know, but, you know, but that said, like I said, this was just put out for discussion, you know, uh, I mean, one of the goals is just, I mean, um, I mean, trying to improve, you know, um, the way, you know, we communicate, I mean, with ourselves, I mean, and, and residents, and it was just something that had been something that I had, I've been struggling with, I mean, since I've been on the board and had talked with, um, uh, at least one of you, um, well, actually only one of you about it, so, so, uh, so that's it, you know, so, so, I am, I'm, I'm, we have the, the one alias, I mean, I, I guess the, maybe something I'll ask you to think about, you know, uh, and staff maybe, is whether we do want to create another alias that makes it easier for people to send mail to all of us, you know, uh, and, and so, just think about that, I'm not gonna ask that now because maybe we do want them to actually have to like be put in the names for each of us, you know, uh, so that they, they really do have to work to send it to all of us as opposed to an alias that would be like, you know, select board all or something like that, so, so think about that and, 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 and unless there's more to say on this, um, we'll move on and we'll go tend to something else, I mean, maybe next week because next week might be a pretty light agenda, I mean, I will not do these on, on nights when we have a lot on agenda, I mean, but it is a way to just kind of keep our goals in front of us and certainly if folks have something that they would like to bring up, uh, related to goals, and these are goals that are SB goals, I mean, uh, or maybe SB, I mean, and TM goals, I mean, uh, so, so, I think we're sat here and we'll, um, move on to correspondence received, you know, so we have a request for a stop sign on Dudley Street at Brattle Street by Mark Weiss, I mean, number seventeen, a memo regarding public safety overtime budgets by Sandy Poole, town manager, and number eighteen, a memo regarding the status of Chatham Street, once again, by the town manager, Attorney, my colleagues?
Move your feet.
And motion by Ms. Mahan and Mr. Hurd, Mr. Okay, sorry, Mr. Hellmuth, I'm a little slow on getting to your hands, so Mr. Hurd got it, you know, so, um, so any, um, comments? Yeah, Mr. Hellmuth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to express my appreciation to the town manager for the, uh, the two detailed memos, uh, that were in correspondence received, I thought they were informative, and I appreciate the time that went into that and the responsiveness to...
to the select board requests on this.
My pleasure. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chairman, um, could I ask on Mr. Weiss, uh, number sixteen, if that should, I don't know if it should go to TAC or if it should go to our traffic enforcement division officer or toe. So I'll leave it to the chairman to have a conversation with the town manager, uh, which way it should go. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, thank you.
You know, and so, yeah, I, I just do want to say that, um, I really appreciate the, the responses, uh, Mr. Poole, you know. And thankfully, I mean, since these are on the agenda, it will be searchable, uh, through those agendas so that when they come up again, because, because in the case of the overtime budget, I mean, I kind of recall that one from town meeting. I mean, and it's just nice to have a place to go where you can see like a definitive response, I mean. So, so I very much appreciate that. And, and I'll, and I'll say to the Chestnut Street, I mean, uh, stay tuned, there's more to come on that. I mean, we may be having an update, I mean, from TAC, I mean, at our, um, our next meeting, you know. So it's, because, um, yesterday's TAC meeting was, um, quite productive meeting. It was a long meeting, a lot of came out of it and we'll be seeing, you know, some results of that at our next meeting. And so, uh, yes, I will take Ms. Mahan's advice and I'll talk with you, Mr. Manager, I mean, about, I mean, that item because I was thinking myself, I mean, how do we handle stop signs, I mean, and it may need to go to TAC, I'm not sure. Mr. Hurd?
Mr. Chair, I think we can just refer that to the town manager, the former member of traffic. TAC, I know that a T-stop is an automatic stop. So there's no, there's no traffic analysis that needs to be done. So I think the town manager's office can just handle the installation of a stop sign. Because there's, there's no, there's no different change to the traffic rules and order. Whenever there is a T-stop, there doesn't need to be a, a stop sign because by law you have a stop sign. So should be something I think we could resolve pretty quickly and not put, have to burden TAC with it.
All right, all right. Well, thank you, Mr. Hurd. It's always helpful to have another member of TAC on the board, you know. So, uh, all right. I think we're all set here. So on a motion to, um, receive, um, by Ms. Mahan and second by Mr. Hurd, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
See you in a minute.
Thank you. And so I'm looking in attendees, I mean, and, and we're all alone here, you know, except for Ms. Gilbert, you know. So I think we're all set with open forum and then, and so, uh, I'm going to do, uh, new business now. Uh, so Mrs. Mahan?
No new business, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Heim?
No new business, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
No new business, thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to go to, um, the virtual land, I mean, Mr. Helmoth?
No new business.
Mr. Hurd, Hurd?
No new business.
Mrs. Mahan?
Uh, my new business is the ZBA opening, which we already talked about, so nothing else. Thank you.
And?
Mr. Corsey? Mr. Chairman, yeah, just briefly, um, and, and this was mentioned earlier tonight. And Mrs. Mahan mentioned that we received the resignation from Mr. Mills. And we often are appointing people at our, at our meetings and there were two longtime committee members whose resignations were, one we received today, Mr. Mills. Mr. Warden had stepped down. It's on the board of registrars and, um, I want to thank them for their service. Uh, Mr. Mills was on the ZBA during the Mugar hearings, which are very lengthy, the other, um, forty B hearing and many other hearings. And, and he's actually leaving town. That's, that's what's precipitating his, um, leaving the ZBA. Mr. Warden had served for, for years, probably decades on the, on the board of registrars. I want to thank him for his service. So we're fortunate to have people to step into positions, but we also want to thank people who have served for a long period of time who are leaving. And then just one comment. Um, during the pandemic, we talked about the select board being the laboratory for remote meetings and in-person and fully remote. And I believe this is the first time and, and it is good to see how we can run a meeting where there are more meetings, more members attending remotely than are in-person. And, and I think, um, the technology, we wouldn't blip with the, the power here, but it just shows you what you can do and, and what we will continue to look at as, as we run meetings and receive public input. But, um, I think, I think it was interesting just to see how, how that worked. And at least from here in the chambers, it was very easy to hear my colleagues and, and to see them on, on issues. And, and, um, so I think it was successful.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yes, yes. So whether, I mean, is, I mean, for health reasons, I mean, or is necessary, I mean, or, or some other conveniences, I've told you all, I mean, I mean, please, we, technology's our friend here and it'll make things easier for us. I mean, so, so I'm glad that you were able to utilize it. And so I have, um, four quick items, the new business, you know, the first, I saw the, uh, notice, I mean, a news article about, I mean, it's like Agnes's, uh, one hundred fiftieth anniversary. I mean, um, that's impressive, you know, for any institution, you know, to, to celebrate a hundred and fifty years here in Arlington. So congratulations on that. Uh, the second is that, uh, I would like to, um, have a conversation about the beautification, uh, committee. We have it as our goal to populate that committee. And so I'm going to put that on the agenda, although I may reach out to you, Mr. Hurd, as my plus one on this, I mean. So I know there's been some work with the chamber on this. So just want to give a little heads up on that. And I did actually mention, you know, during correspondence received, that we're going to have some updates from TAC, you know, next meeting, you know. And, and, um, and finally, you know, want to congratulate Erica Schwartz, I mean, on conducting a really, um, a, a very enjoyable, um, annual meeting for the Housing Corporation of Arlington, I mean, on Tuesday. I mean, uh, they asked me to speak and I had prepared, uh, two speeches because I was of two minds, you know, and I had them pick, you know, one of them kind of randomly. And so I gave them the creative speech, you know. Uh, and so that was fun. But it was a really nicely done, uh, event. And, and the ACA, as we all know, do, uh, they do great work. And, and I think Erica is really a great, um, addition as the new executive director. So, um, with that, I'm going to end on the land acknowledgement. You know, my general pattern is to do the land acknowledgement on the first meeting of the month, you know. Yeah, I'm trying to adhere to the spirit of, of the resolution. And that is that we do acknowledge, I mean, what has led, I mean, well, acknowledge the pass, I mean. And, and I'm not doing it every meeting because I think sometimes by not having something, I mean, you're more aware of it, you know. And so if you do it every meeting at the same time, you know, it just becomes kind of habit, I mean, that people don't focus on as much. And I am putting it this month, I mean, at the end. And partly because I saw Sustainable Arlington do it. And I regret that I haven't been to some of their meetings lately. I'm going to try and get there. And I thought that was a interesting place to put it because instead of doing it at the beginning, we're going to end, um, thinking about the land acknowledgement. And we acknowledge that Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous people from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline, the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. And, and I think it's particularly appropriate, given that we celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day, I mean, early at the beginning of the week. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Second?
So on a motion to adjourn by Ms. Mahan and a second by Mr. Corsey, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
My phone, it's 11:15, yes?
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
See you in a minute.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. Take care. Good meeting.